I'm meeting to order now. Please start the first meeting.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have a motion to adopt amended agenda. I'm going to adopt the amended agenda. I have a second.
I'll second.
Motion made in seven, taken in paper.
Aye.
Any others? None? Public comment period. Citizens may address the council on items on the agenda or not on the agenda. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please, when is your comments in three minutes? Please state your name and address for the record. You have any public comments? Okay, very none. Going down the whole business. Aaron Stewart letter requesting water services on South K. Do you guys have anything to say on that?
Just pretty much that the ordinance is going to stand the way it's written. And there's also another ordinance that was written in conjunction with it that it does it reveals a few sections of the earlier ordinance. Ordinance eight twelve, I have copies of it, anybody would like them? Hi, Aaron.
We're talking about Aaron, talking about your request for water services.
Oh, perfect. Sorry, I am late.
So we were just mentioning that we're in favor of staying the way the ordinance was written. And then there's also an addendum to that, an additional ordinance that's a little bit better. Clearly defines how to recoup your money if you decide to use your own money to go ahead and put in a main. So I have some copies of that I could give you.
Should we have a copy for the council on that ordinance?
I have copies here.
I wasn't here for the last meeting, I guess I'm.
Well, I have copies of the original ordinance.
So this is eight twelve, right?
Yeah. I guess I don't have a big, all I have is this eight twelve.
Is this an extra copy I can keep for?
Okay.
You have the original, Chicago, do you have the original? Uh, that's the addendum to it. I don't think I had one, one to them, Aaron's down also.
Thank you.
So just you're saying that, that as we discussed last time, we're standing that decision? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, that it doesn't really warrant us putting in a main down there, or, you know, it just wouldn't pay off or even come close to making it worth putting a main for us down there right now.
Okay. I had another question that maybe Darwin can help answer. Would it be possible to zone that property as a multifamily residence so I could just use the easement?
The county doesn't have multifamily. You could go through a conditional use permit to do two dwellings on one lot, but that still may not change the fact of how the water lines are connected. If you were to keep the progress together, yeah, it's all one tax lot. There should be, we talked about that the first meeting where you could have an agreement for that second dwelling on that property. Plan commission should approve that, by noticing that's just not going to go into the process.
And that should solve the problem, right?
It could help with the problem, but.
I don't know about that.
Yeah, so I mean, that's something.
Yeah, it doesn't solve it because, you know, that same thing has been tried before and we still end up with the spaghetti line running everywhere. If you don't have a main in the street, well, it's hard to develop the property.
What about running a separate lane from Knight Street, just the back?
If the property isn't split, if it's all one property.
If it was gonna all be, what do you think on that, Darrell? Could that be included in the same meter that they have out front? Would it be two dwellings or just continue to be, would it be one eventually?
Could you, well, it would be like multifamily, so it'd be on this, the homes couldn't be sold together. I mean, sold separately, they'd have to be sold together. Be on the same meter.
Yeah.
So similar to like an RV park or something like that, if there's one meter and it serves you multiple units, then you charge, you know, per unit. And so in this case, if they're just keeping the same meter, the usage goes up obviously because there's other units on that same meter. They're gonna just build another lateral line connecting to that service. And then just getting charged double. So at their cost, obviously extend that line and then we just charge them the benefit rate. That's all the ordinance at least.
Would it stay one tax lot?
Yeah.
Yeah.
One part, wouldn't be split.
Right.
But that's still plan commission decision to approve the same dwelling on that lot.
I think that would, I don't think the ordinance addresses that.
Right.
It'd just be one service for one.
Tax lot.
One tax lot. So I think that would.
And you could increase the size of the service, you know, you could go with a inch and a half service.
Right.
If it remained one tax lot, I think, yeah, that would work.
The raises were not increasing, where we're not increasing grandfather situation. I think that does comply section eight twelve, so I think that could be done.
Would it still have to go through planning to get a?
They have to go through county planning stuff first, and they would want to do it, they would want to do that process first before annexation. So you would want to make a change so it comes in to us with that other use already. So you want to do it through the county first, then annex.
Okay. Who do I contact for that?
What?
Yeah, me. Okay, great.
We got another hat on.
Right. And then we, and then once you've got that all taken care of, then plot, you know, instead of larger, instead of annex, and then it comes to me.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Move on to the North End Water Extension Project, Darrell.
The funding was approved for the North End extension out to Pacific Pine, Pearl Lake. We did, we did obtain forty-five thousand dollars of that money and grant due to the jobs out there. So that will serve Pearl Lake, Pacific Pine, Stab, my office, we're looking at some others. We have, we have gotten all the deeds and put those together with the consents to annex. So we'll be giving those to the owners so those can be signed and then we'll go ahead with construction and get the project out. And we have a year to finish the annexation, so that'll be the, we will get that done later if it happens. And probably, and you mentioned a couple of these other projects that we've been talking about as far as, because it saves, we can do it all as one giant one. It saves costs for, because it's the same process whether you're doing one or twenty.
Okay. Yeah, I did give an email on that. All right, next online, Mark Meecher, you're up.
Counsel, I suggest you guys, because you've got other people on the line for public hearing and stuff, you guys table this one, tell the end, and tell the other stuff, the images of the section can get done, because that should move fairly quickly. That way you don't have people on, because you have people on computers and stuff that are not.
All right, we'll put this one as last. All right, then we'll go into the new business under public hearing on public, Tennessee Plan Zone Use District Map Amendment and Conditional Use. Number seven forty-eight by Scott and Tanya Mobley, contains the plan and zone designations for one parcel of industrial, general industrial to establish a stockpile located east of Hill Drive. We'll go into a public meeting after right now.
And Mr. Mary, you're delegating, giving the meeting notice to Councilwoman Lenzel. Is that correct?
Right. So is that paperwork on this that I'm missing? Should have been in your, this is everything, and then online, I didn't see a single thing from my email. Did you not get your packet from the last meeting? I wasn't here, remember? No, no, I was not. I was out of town. Why I didn't hear? Are you ready? This is all that was in your box. Thank you.
Okay, calling a meeting to further, a public hearing on a quasi judicial land use application is scheduled for tonight. Oregon law requires that I have several announcements for this hearing. A staff report has been prepared for the application, and the staff report was available seven days before tonight's meeting hearing. The staff report identifies the applicable criteria that apply to the applicant's proposed development and analyzes those criteria. A copy of the rules and procedure for the hearing, the agenda for tonight's hearing, and copies of the staff report are available at the entrance in the back of the room. All those in attendance are asked to sign the pen and sheet and please include your address. Testimony and evidence from all concerned shall be specific to the application, no, excuse me, to the applicable criteria and standards. Testimony also should not be repetitious. Please do not repeat testimony offered by yourself or earlier witnesses. Also, please refrain from demonstrations such as applause, cheering, or other disruptions which are prohibited. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the council makes a decision you agree with, any issue that you want to raise on appeal has to be raised for the council's consideration. Failure to embrace the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to have afforded the council and the parties to this proceeding to respond to that issue will be called appealed on that issue to the Land Use Board of Appeals. I'm going to go ahead with this. Pardon me?
I don't, I don't, no, I don't think that.
Yes, that's the first part of the hearing is, persons who are present and support the application will be heard next. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes. Correspondents in support of the application will be entered into the record. So those in favor of this are?
Do you have something to say?
If we want to speak.
I'm here to answer any questions.
I have something to say. I'm Scott Warner. I know most of you, I'm working with Scott and Tanya on this application. Sandra was at the planning commission hearing, so I'm compelled to disclose that I graduated eighth grade at Union School, Scott. Went through high school a little while ago, so we've known each other for a little while. With respect for the council, I'll get my shield, because I'm going to walk up in a minute. And I've got some maps for you. These are extra maps, but they're eight by eleven. Two of these, if you pass them around once a tax lot map in the area. And they just kind of help the, I eight by eleven on the application makes it difficult to see these. I've got big ones for the council, but I just didn't make enough big ones for anybody else. Does everybody have two maps, aerial photograph and the tax lot map? Let's start with the tax lot map. And to help orient you before we're talking about, you can see, outlined in red is tax lot four oh two. And that's currently zone residential. You'll see the little square that says four oh one. Okay, that's the water tower above East. So four oh two is about a hundred acres on South E. And it's the rim above town, and then it carries over, kind of like this dashed line, it starts to break into a bench. Okay? So that's his own residential, and you'll notice in the corner, the section corners, fourteen and fifteen. Well, the city's boundary is the section line between fourteen and fifteen, okay? So just in, in section fourteen is tax lot twenty-five hundred. And tax lot twenty-five hundred has a permitted aggregate mine that Scott owns on him. And is that, how big's twenty-five hundred?
Hundred and twenty-five acres.
Hundred and twenty-five acres. That's where the pit's at.
Right.
And so let's switch to this aerial photograph, and that'll help a little bit. And if you view this one like this, you'll remember the section corners, and there's the water tower above you. And so you can see kind of the line between fourteen and fifteen is the line between city and county, and there's a white flag that says pit or pit. Okay? So this area that the pit's in is a steep rock canyon.
It's just real steep hill.
Real steep hill. So right now, the area that's mined, there's no place to store crushed rock. Okay? And you'll see the road that comes out of, out of the mine and comes on to tax lot four oh two, which is residentially zoned. And you'll see a little white flag that says stockpile area. And this is that bench above town. So what we propose is for you to rezone about thirty-seven acres of that to industrial with a conditional use permit to process aggregate with the limiting condition that we stockpile them. Okay? What's happening right now is, when we process rock in that pit, there's no place to store it. We went up here. It's too steep on tax lot twenty-five hundred, and the bench that's on four oh two is zone residential. So we come out foothill drive, and you'll see it winds slow around on the contours, and it comes out on East Street at eleven. And then those trucks go south and out on the three ninety-five. And then that rock right now is being stored on N Street, the industrial part, next to Scott's shop. Scott crushed in two thousand nineteen. To move that rock out took a hundred and forty-four trips a day for four weeks. So we're trying to solve two problems with this. One is to give Scott and Tanya a place to stockpile rock. And two is not to have a month's stream of truck traffic. So if we can stockpile crushed rock up here, then we'll go get it when we need it and take it to the project. That's the purpose of the application. The criteria, the criteria that apply are all the state land use goals and all your comprehensive plan goals and policies. I will not try to address every goal and policy if not, or we'll be here this time tomorrow. But there are three that I think are directly related to this application, and I do want to talk briefly about. The first is goal ten housing, the housing goal. And as planners, it's your obligation to make sure that there's adequate housing within your jurisdiction. And in two thousand nineteen, let's see, have a housing needs analysis. Remember, we're taking this out of residential and putting it into industrial. So if you do that, you still have enough housing. And the two thousand nineteen analysis said that within your jurisdiction, there's three hundred and thirty-one net buildable acres. And we're asking you to take out about thirty-seven. That study also said that you don't need any more land for housing through two thousand thirty-nine. We also wondered because this is three hundred feet above the valley floor, right, we're up on that bench above town. Isn't even practical to have housing there. So we had the engineer and Ben look at it, and to put in water and sewer and storm drain and streets, kind of just the initial infrastructure. Did we do nineteen lots, twenty lots?
Twenty lots.
Twenty lots?
I did have twenty lots, yeah.
It was a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars a lot.
Cost.
Just cost.
How much?
A hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars a lot. And that study's attached to your.
Oh, it's there, okay.
So for practical purposes, it's not going to be developed housing anytime soon. The other goal, second goal that I thought applied directly to this was goal twelve, your transportation planning goal. And so we had a transportation planning engineer firm look at this issue, and they came back kind of like you would expect. Net, it'll reduce traffic, because right now, we're hauling it off the hill to storage on M. And we have a project, we're picking it up and putting it back on the roads to haul it to that project. So I don't think we run a valid transportation planning goal, because we shouldn't be taking traffic off those local roads. The last goal that I think applies directly to this is goal six, and that's the air, water, and land resources goal. And the standard for that goal is, if you approve this, is it reasonable to expect that state and federal environmental quality standards will be met? Is it reasonable to expect state and federal environmental quality standards to be met? And so we're talking about dust and noise and erosion and that kind of thing. And I'll tell you, as council folks, we met with your city staff a couple of times before we put the application together. Met with Darwin as well, in his role as town chair as our county planner. And looked at some options, and this property has a history, it's about ten years old now. But at one time, somebody wanted to put an asphalt plant up there. And the community just said, no way, you're not putting an asphalt plant right above our town. So we were concerned with making sure that the community could get along with what we wanted to do. And that's why we're applying for conditional use permit for aggregate extraction. And that will bring this property under Scott's Department of Geology and Mineral Industries permit. So then the whole thing as a whole will be regulated by government for dust and noise and erosion and that kind of thing. So I think it is reasonable to expect the state and federal environmental quality standards to be met.
And did you say at the planning meeting that you had already bought that permit from?
Yeah, the permit's already on the existing mine, so it would just be expanded to include this property once it's rezoned and the conditional use allowed. So.
Thank you.
I won't keep going through goals. If there are questions, we're going to have to answer any questions.
Is there anyone else that we should speak in favor of?
Well, I'm Scott Mobley, and this is my life, and if there's any questions, be far away and want to answer what we can, as often as we can.
Anyone else? And we'll close that portion of the hearing. And move to persons who are present and who oppose the application will then be heard. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes. Correspondents in opposition to the application will be entered into the record. So is there anyone here who wants to speak in opposition of this plan? No one? Okay. And we will then close that portion of the hearing.
So that you're aware, where you're mentioned, so that you're aware, we sent two different letters to the community. One last November and one about a month ago. Just to let them know what we're doing, those letters both had Scott's cell phone number in it. And so we've tried to let the community know what we're applying for and what's going on so that, so they call Scott if they have any issues.
Well, the next portion was, the applicant is given a final rebuttal at which time the public hearing will be closed. So that was your final rebuttal.
Unless you want to hear more about statewide planning.
Thank you. And, oh, never. Pardon me? Wenzel, there was no oral or written testimony. There was, there's no, that was in the testimony, I did see the record. So there has been no oral or written testimony that has been placed in the record concerning this. Okay? Members of the council and town attorney may direct questions to the applicant or opponents to assist in arriving at a decision. Any of the council have questions or comments?
Well, one thing I can say, Scott, is I think the people on East Street, well, people have not seen the trucks pulling up and down the hill.
Well, I'm not saying they're not going to go up and down the hill.
No, but not as much.
Which is not unnecessarily.
Right.
You know, I think it's going to really help everybody, and that was my goal, my goal, that was, to try and reduce that, boostings.
Yeah. Yeah, because I've heard some comments, man, he's running a lot of trucks.
Well, yeah, they were running that unnecessarily, right?
Yeah.
You don't have to excuse me, because I have absolutely no idea until Scott, because I'm a landmark person. So Scott kind of gave me an idea of where you're at. I'm not familiar with your operation. But looking at the list of adjacent landowners, there's not a whole lot of landowners near you, I'm assuming.
No, at least they're back about eight hundred feet from our nearest landowner below the, below the property.
Okay.
From this thirty-three acres we're asking for.
So, and this may be one that, what is the minimum notification requirement? Is it a hundred feet as well?
An exterior block.
Okay, so sorry.
Which then they notify everyone from the hundred feet.
Actually, we notify everybody both sides.
I was about to say, I'm a lot further than a hundred feet.
Both, both sides, we want, we want the whole community to know.
Okay, okay, and I appreciate that due diligence, because it seems like you must be traveling on that road, I see, is it East Street, right? That you were traveling on?
We don't go on East Street.
Well, we do, we dropped one to East Street. But the trucks that, they go up one foothill drive, and then they go above East Street to get up to this property.
It doesn't really go through the heavily populated part of the.
Yeah.
We're coming out down at eleven.
Right.
So I think the Bowman's Club, I think forty-eight or nine repairs there, we're just about a half a mile north of the county gravel pit.
Yeah.
And then.
It's around the south end of town.
That gives you better, Scott.
Yeah, really nothing.
But your guys also went clear down to Fourth Street, off of East Street. That's how far your letters went.
Oh, yes.
Right, yes. Yeah, because they went way beyond and then, above and beyond where they actually had to go. Yeah, I appreciate that, because, well, a hundred feet isn't a whole lot.
That's nothing.
No. So I appreciate that, the extra distance that you guys went, and you received no feedback from anybody?
I did have a couple of letters, which I went and talked to people, and one was from Orkeline's. And they were concerned that I was going to build a rock there right on their backyard. And I explained, went to them, explained to them, no, it's eight hundred feet up the hill until you bench back there. And so there's, they thought, well, as long as you're not trying to run trucks right here in our backyard, we're happy. And who else did we talk to that was, there was one other one? No, it was one other serious one. Anyway, any, anybody that can't talk to me, I went and talked to them, and then they were happy with my explanation.
And the council, Wendell, just to clarify, the letters that Mr. Mobley's talking about, where we see partition application, not current. Though it feels like that's similar.
Yeah.
Okay. So any other questions or comments from the council? The council will make the decision or continue its deliberations for another time, in place of the mayor.
It would be my recommendation with the testimony that you've heard, and if the council doesn't almost prove it, that for findings, the staff report is a fair reflection of what the record is and the goals that are made. So if the council is wanting to approve it, that that is, I would suggest that be adopted as you guys' proposed findings. And then I will prepare ordinance accordance. If there's other findings you guys want to make, we can course put those in, but I think that pretty well on both the conditional use permit and the findings have been pretty well encapsulated, the decision you guys have to make, I think covers the funding goals quite well as far as putting in that it's constant decision that's a combination legislative and quasi judicial with conditional use permit. But as they stated, the CUP does mitigate, and the WAMU permit also is then being incorporated, those things, restrictions will be there. That does prevent the prior history, because what had happened twenty years ago, it was a very contentious land use process where a gentleman named Matchit went in there, do the asphalt plant, and went to Luba, came back, and still ended up getting disapproved and ran roughshod over most of the neighbors. So it was a very ugly, ugly process, so it's much different than this.
All right, council?
Motion on this?
Let me just say real quick that it wasn't asked to actually take contact on this, but Scott had mentioned that I obviously talked with you before this as the county planning director, and when you were talking originally about how the existing pit was still valid. And so I've had plenty of conversations, and it's an actual performance. And so I've had plenty of conversations and it's an actual performance summary, which is wonderful. And this, you know, I appreciate the effort that you guys put into notifying the adjacent owners prior and prior to all applications, not just this, the partition part as well. And just making sure that the public awareness was out there to reflect that stuff early, to get clarification of what you're doing. That helps this process. I, you know, with you, the staff board, I'm very comfortable with it and definitely shows the amount of effort that was put into it. As Scott and yourself, you guys did a good job. So with that, I must still approve the staff board's presentation and recommend approval for this. I believe the board, I believe the council will come in and speak about that.
Motion made, can you say it?
Hi.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Short and brief.
I saved as long as anybody had questions.
I appreciate it. The rest is in business. Hopefully we'll go by very fast. Ordinance 870. The ordinance, you men, you participate in the plan map and zoning. Map for town, ordinance 770.
Do you have an actual copy of the big maps?
Um, I don't. I don't, I just took those and blew them up at the S D.
Thank you.
Yeah, under fire, sometimes, but I had no expertise, that was wrong. But there was no need to be strict on that. Where we saw that, thank you, page one, the first paragraph under bias and ex parte contact. Last sentence said that Councilor Taylor said she had no ex parte conversations, that her second class sentence. And no, that's not what I said. So no need to be taken out.
Just a word no?
Yes, I have that. So what are you going to, what do you want to replace it? Do you just take out the word no, should be Councilor Taylor that said that she had ex parte conversations? So the top figure.
Okay, just take out no.
No, that would be a correct sentence, taking out the word no.
Yes.
If you guys don't want to go through the reading process, you, somebody needs to make a motion to retitle only to approve this.
I move that we need, hold on, ordinance 870, I have it on my.
Motion made, can I get it?
Aye.
Aye. Do you propose?
Aye.
I really don't want to ask this, but I'm going to, does it have to be unanimous on the title?
Did you hear that?
Right, the council's checking.
So if we just do this to the end and finish it at the end and forward?
Well, we have. It is not council, we can't hold for some of this on one. Well, I think what.
It's not.
It's not, yes, our legal council has to advise us whether it has to be unanimous or not. Did you guys hear that? Coming to us?
I'm not, is she still on that?
I'm here.
Oh, okay, okay, I didn't see you move and I thought, I'm here. Okay.
You. You made the motion in passing, right?
It was a four to one and Councilman Johnson asked our attorney if it needed to be a unanimous vote. So our attorney is looking at that.
Well, we were just really, um, read it by title only.
Title only.
Yes, our title only, not to approve the don't change. So then we were voting on only title only. Uh, with an out vote, you know, I thought we were.
We can't, we can't change it.
I think you need to, it would be safer, if that's what you want to do, I would file a motion to reconsider.
Yeah, I wasn't clear at the same time that you were voting on title only.
So if that's the case, then I would suggest a motion to reconsider and.
From the, from the vote.
Yeah.
Which I will make that motion to reconsider the vote. To retitle only.
Second?
All second.
All right. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then you need to do a vote discussion and everything on the ordinance.
Okay, I have a motion on it. On that ordinance.
Is there, is there any discussion?
Discussion hasn't come, Councilor Wendell told us for a motion, it's second, it's headed for discussion, so unless.
I'll make a motion, the pass one is 870, yes, sir.
I'm second.
I'll second.
Okay.
Discussion.
Discussion?
Discussion.
No discussion.
Jane, can you give us a brief summary of how this staff board is different? I mean, it's clearly much different than the last one, but how, what key points are different out of that?
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm just looking for like just a brief summary of the difference between this ordinance and maybe, maybe their legal counsel. I would assume that you and have them work together with their legal counsel on the way to this ordinance to prepare.
I'm just looking for a brief summary.
This was, this was done, they set findings and I'll let this, I'll let Jennifer Grace take this as well after I saw. This ordinance was, the findings were done in the alternative, both under the development standards and under the fair housing standards and the American Civil Rights Act. So there is multiple grounds for affirmative based on both development standards, based on reasonable accommodation requests and based on fair housing standards at both state and federal levels. So that is, those are the main, whereas the staff report did not completely address all of those as far as. So this goes into much more detail related to beach, so this provides alternate bases for, or multiple alternate bases for the council's decision that was made. So to reflect all testimony, all evidence.
I just want to start by saying that this is the zone, change, the don't change ordinance for that.
Correct.
Which should have, which should have nothing to do with ADA requirements.
That's, yeah.
Uh, the ADA and all of those still apply to those level decisions with the estimates that was brought up. That's why the alternate findings are put in there as a, because when the standards implicate those potential issues, those are an overlay. So that's how the findings were drafted.
So it will apply to paper if the permanent supported housing application comes forward at a later date.
Right, and that is, and that is conditional on that being the use for those alternate findings. The other findings that are, that are also then, if it's just straight up multifamily, then that is a public supported housing, then the findings related to the development standards would not be important.
So in this where it says, you know, for example, school 10 housing and then at the very end, prior to goal 11, it says the council concludes school 10 is met. Meaning if this is approved, we as a council approve those schools are met where it says that in, in the staff report.
That is correct.
Yeah.
I'm lost for a second.
Don't worry.
We're on discussion, I have to further discussion.
Yeah. Uh, do we need to hear from her?
If the council wants to. Otherwise, it's just more difficult to discuss what's there. So if you guys have any questions, prior to she is available. But obviously it's not additional evidence, it'd just be explanation. The council needs to further it.
Yeah, mostly I'm just observed unless there's a specific question. I have no questions.
I have no questions.
I have none.
No, I have any questions. My prior testimony from the committee is still standing, this is what the council was pleased to deny this. And it's unfortunate the way this all went down. You know, besides the law, there is going to be a problem for doing anything more than the, you know, three that's allowed by the society.
I would say the same, my prior testimony, I think the reason would be that, but you know, looking at this staff report, what the council approved it all over that, I can't say that I agree with that, so.
Okay, we had a motion, no more, no more discussion, we already had a motion, second. The votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Three and two. Resolution. Nine, nine, two. What's this, uh? Have President sale of town property, Red Rock? Do I have a motion on that?
This is a, what, right, the, so, I'm.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to the resolution nine, two.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, votes in favor?
Aye.
Well, there is, I have a discussion real quick. Red Rock has applied for a conditional use permit for wastewater treatment portion that would draw onto this property, so that's been filed. We discussed this a number of different meetings and I was hopeful that we, I wish we would have looked into it a little bit further for on the lease. And I know you stated that there was liabilities that were dispossessing. You know, at least enough could have brought continual revenue to the town. There's always a liability with any wastewater treatment situation. And we know that this is what Red Rock prefers and I think that's what our public works and everybody else prefers, so. I'm okay that you guys have a, I just have a different opinion on that. I wish we would have brought this in as a lease option and not sold the lease, but then had this as a potential asset installed property for us later, if Red Rock were to. That's all. I think although I just. Although I actually, I'm, I'm torn because this is what it's going to be.
So it is unanimous?
Yeah.
File.
In the future, when something like this comes up, it would be great to have a director from council to look through options. And the differences on alternative ways to take a, go about doing something instead of after that.
I remember that one too, in the first meeting.
Yeah, we did talk, discuss it, but decided it was.
And we're, and we're for this one.
Yeah, that's all I think is.
No, I hear you, I'm just going to say that I did then got. You know, it's pretty, I'm about then, but legal counsel did say we have liability that way. But.
Who need to go? Jay Allen?
The E.
G eight? D eight?
E, yeah, E, E.
Do you get an extension agreement in place for a water right for the ugly well, helping with the town?
That's the well that, if you remember, we had some lawsuits on and other things before the town finally got control of that well. We have filed water rights on it. Due to the money we spent and whatnot through the litigation process, we haven't done any permit improvements yet. So we need to file for an extension. So we are, we are doing that.
So it is in process?
It is in process. So this is informational, you guys.
Thank you.
Want to put E geothermal pipe purchase for Red Rock Water Extension?
Uh, that's in conjunction with the bids for the cooling water, which we received a few days ago. We need to award that bid, I don't know where you were planning on that on the, on the agenda or.
Uh, right now.
Um, the little bidder was Morello Construction out of Kiloquim. Uh, the total bid was 1.9 million and some. Part of that project, the, if y'all have this list, everyone here has the list. The bottom four bid items on there extends our geothermal line from our injection well down to Red Rock. Because we've talked a couple of times about using the excess steam that they have from the plant to supplement our geothermal water that comes from the very well. Would also give us a backup. Um, if we work on the very well, we'll still be able to supply hot water to heat in the school, the hospital and the other customers we have. So I guess there's, there's two things there, we need to, we need to award this bid. And then those last four bid items total 252,000 dollars, which is the town's responsibility to extend that line down there. So that's a, that's a town expense.
What expense is that?
The last four bid.
That is our expense to, to extend.
So, so I think it would be easier to understand, to know that it's something that, that we have an option to use their, their excess steam from their production. And it would be a less expensive way to heat the water than pumping it out of the ground where we're doing. And it's something that could be done at a later date if we decided we wanted to use that later. It doesn't have to be done right now, but the hole is already going to be open, we already have the street torn up. And there's really a lot of stuff getting in that industrial parkway, street, there's a ton of stuff in there, so. It's about 250,000 dollars we spend now or probably spend 350,000 dollars later, wouldn't you think, Gerald, if we had to go back and do it, so.
What would be the use of that steam? And we have dirt geothermal already access that we're not utilizing to its fullest. So what would be the geothermal from the steam?
It would, it would supplement the temperature, you know, if the hospital continues to grow, I can't imagine that. But if they were to continue to grow, they're probably approaching our maximum or even supply out there with the schools and the hospital now. And if we did have a problem with it, then everybody's got to go on propane or oil for the backup, which the school actually doesn't have.
And if we did have a problem with it, then everybody's got to go on propane or oil for the backup, which the school actually doesn't have. So it, it would supply a backup supply for hot water. It will be a much less expensive supply of hot water too, because I don't even think they've talked about. I, I think it may not cost us anything to use that, other than putting in the infrastructure.
Well, we don't know that yet, do we? We don't have an agreement on that.
No, we do not have an agreement on that.
We do not have a written agreement. No, we do not. We have a verbal agreement.
Yeah.
So they have twenty thousand pounds of steam per hour to waste. So we talked oh, way back in the process that we wanted some extra heat from the plant to supplement our geothermal water from the very well. We have a hundred and seventy degree water coming from that well. We could have easily two hundred and ten degree water, which would, if we use the steam, which would almost double the capacity, the heating capacity of our.
If we just wanted to make that system available to other customers, we're, you know, approaching, we're not to the maximum right now, but we're approaching what we can do with what we have right now, so. It would make it where we could offer it to another industry that needed heat in their process.
I think, I think my, my hesitation on why we're bearing the, the entire expense of that is one, there's no guarantee we're going to use it. Two, we're obviously not profiting off the geothermal like we expected to. And at this point, we don't know what kind of cost this is going to incur to us. If at all, or you know, something that we can't afford. Is this an expense that we're looking at that's as reasonable for us to take on right now?
Where is it that this money is coming from?
Yeah.
Geothermal.
Geothermal. But geothermal's not in a positive.
Due to that lawsuit mostly.
The lawsuit, the lawsuit was around two hundred thousand. In between two hundred thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand. My thoughts is it would be nice for us to start coordinating other companies to come in and take advantage of carbon credits and cut their costs of production with it. Um, it's very exciting and um, I, I know a lot of companies are looking for this type of.
Better, yeah.
Options. They're looking for that and it's a, it's a high expense on a futuristic possibility.
And, and my thought is that we are meeting the needs of our community as it is. Uh, for housing, childcare and employment and things like that, you know, bringing in another business. Yes, we want to always work towards that, but I feel like we need to start putting some reinvesting into our infrastructure that exists before we start adding potential stuff down the road.
I think what they're thinking of is, is in the future. And this is, to do it right now, a hundred thousand dollar cheaper than what it would be later.
Well, it'd be two hundred thousand dollars later, but we may never use it.
And we may use it all the time. If it increases.
I feel like it's riding a car that just sits there in the hope that you're going to need it down the road, you know?
This line is from catalyst from Red Rock up to Nice, right?
No, it is. It only goes for a re-injection well side because that would be a.
It's just past the, it's right there by the uh, county incubator building.
So, oh. So this is.
That can't trap.
Two blocks.
No, it's more than two blocks. It comes past, it comes past Mobley Shop. It's more than three blocks. Well, it's a four block.
You're counting us up to, let me check this out.
It is thirty-seven hundred, it is thirty-seven hundred feet of pipe. Goes from Red Rock side.
So potential users of this, I mean, could be more than just between that section of road?
Well, because it would heat up our whole system that goes to the hospital and the schools right now.
It's timing.
Or go for a re-injection well back into the lines and go to the school and the. It is definitely a gamble.
If we take the very well offline, the pump fails or the well needs worked on, then we would have this steam alternate to heat the water. We would deliver to the customer continually instead of shutting them off.
What was the total?
Uh, two fifty-five thousand, two fifty-two.
This in a way violates our prevailing with barriers.
No. It, it is capacity building and there is some future use there. But it is an expense right now.
It's a state.
It's, we, we threw it in there because we were digging the ditch, so we just threw it in.
No, I understand why the idea behind it. I just would have liked some more discussion before we really honestly get it out, even if it's something that the council wanted to entertain.
Well.
We can leave it out. You can leave it out if you want, or if you want to discuss it more. You know, we're just part of it. We can discuss it more. There, there is quite a long lead time on the pipe, so we, we, you know, we have to turn the order around fairly soon. If, if we're going to do it, but if you want to discuss it some more, we have some more time to do that.
I mean, I'd like to. I mean, I just feel like it's not really, there's not enough information to know what's potential use is. I mean, if I had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of geothermal money to put, I could think of like a bazillion uses that we know we already need. It's just like there's not enough information to know what potential revenue or expense may be down the road for usage or, you know, something.
We thought, there, there's enough steam there. We could generate some power. I don't know if that's going to be worthwhile or not. These utilities don't like to buy it back. Michelle's had some other ideas what to do with the power. You know, that hasn't been hashed out to a point that we can say that that's a viable option, but that is an option. Right now, it's a backup to the geothermal source. And it would add more capacity on the geothermal system.
So while they're digging up all of this, this would be simply a second line running next to it? And is this company a company we've used before?
Yeah.
I have some concerns. I'll be honest.
Is that the one to do the line just there?
Yep, that's my concern.
More to second.
And I understand that often you want to go with lower cost, but I also have concern about what is the cost of this further down the road? Did we not have to pay for extra expenses on that for those lines? Will we?
They didn't have a lot of extras, but they, there was definitely some traffic control problems they had and.
Probably won't be an issue down there.
No, that's, this is more in their wheelhouse. I'm, we had mostly cleanup problems.
Compaction and paving problems. So on this, Red Rock's bearing this cost. I mean, we're, we're paying upfront, we're going to reclaim.
That, that portion of it did not.
No, I know that portion, but the majority of this is Red Rock costs.
Correct.
So we didn't go with the lowest bid. And we knew, like I said, we went with somebody that we've done business with and know they're going to do it right. And Red Rock's comfortable, got any, you know, change orders and all those other things that may come into play on this. There is a, a large difference obviously between the two, and a lot. That concern, I think, too.
I'm worried it's going to go up higher because it's been, so it's so low.
I wish we didn't have just a verbal. Obviously, I think we always got.
Well, I, I think.
That's what may be on the fence too, because we don't have it in writing with them.
Cause what if Red Rock says, you know, we've actually talked to investors and maybe we should do, use this team and we'll create the power here and we'll make the money off of it and knock the town and it won't be huge for a backup and we've got this pipe to nowhere. And that's, that's the only concern I have on this, which is, it's a legitimate concern.
That's why, that's why.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that's why I feel like it needs to have some concrete.
How soon do we have to award this?
We can award it without that.
Right, and I know, but.
I think we should because we gotta get moving on that, so we're going to be on a.
That's what I was wondering, because I, I, I mean, Red Rock may not be in a position to make an agreement within a week, but if we could, we had two weeks to award this.
There have been, those went back and forth on it many times in the last couple of weeks.
I, I agree with you. If we had something right, it would be a good brand.
Yeah, I think so, because I, I do agree. It's a great backup source.
Right.
And now that you've explained it, I think Nikki probably agree that more, because I, I wonder if it is more like a one-to-one uh, with barriers. Like if, if we stopped using barriers for, for some reason, couldn't use barriers or whatever that case is, if this scheme would actually generate just as much as we need to do before and then we've got it up, whatever they bring into Red Rock at a much lower cost potentially.
Guys, let me ask, let me ask this for the Ls. If they start building this project, how long do you guys have? Like if the council got this at their um, next meeting next month, if we had something with Red Rock in place for this, would that be soon enough to award the second?
We can do that. Maybe uh, we, we, there's, there's one, there's one other thing too I want to bring up before um, not to deal with that. Based on the loan and that we've had with uh, IFA. Right. It's went on and went on and went on.
Yeah.
Finally, we've been amended. Then they sent in the whole new, uh, we've got a whole new agreement. So the bid is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars over that loan now. So I did contact Red Rock. So they said just add it to the loan, which will be okay. But we will be doing that. So I would, I would recommend award pending uh, IFA's approval of the amendment, which they'll make.
And then, and Red Rock of, because we need to amend that.
Further information from Red Rock and if, and that way we can start the award process and if, if we don't, by your next meeting, if we don't have something back, we'll just, we'll just draft that towards bid item. We can just draft the bid item.
At these four bids, the one, one bid is actually about ten, twelve thousand dollars less on the town side. Um, and the bid is probably the second, I was actually the third highest bid by, not a whole lot, but the, the expense for the first one is two hundred and thirty-eight thousand roughly rounded. Two hundred and forty-one thousand for the next one, two hundred and sixty-three thousand for the third one and two fifty-three for the little one in yellow.
You can't sweat that.
No, I'm just talking about the expense on the cost. No, I'm looking at the entire bid, but the cost for the town is actually cheaper going with Dog Lake. Their proposal.
It's, can I say something, Gerald?
Yeah.
It, it is, but it's not because Dog Lake is not going to get into ditch with the, with the.
I'm not talking about putting the bid. I'm talking about looking at the cost portion to the town is less with Dog Lake. I'm talking about going with Dog Lake because.
For, for.
For the entire project.
For the entire project.
I'm just looking at, that saves the town twelve thousand dollars as well. Using that company. Which I honestly, I, I have some hesitation with the lowest bid.
But it'll be up to Red Rock if they want this.
Yes, yes, yes.
Except an additional cost.
Yeah, but that would be my proposal.
But they've also worked with Dog Lake as well.
I don't, I don't think we can reject a little bit or.
We don't.
I mean, you have, it's not chiming in there, but.
No, we don't have enough, we don't have enough uh, legal basis for, they, they haven't done something where they could disqualify or admit other requirements, so a little bit is kind of what we're. We're just gonna have to be on and make sure they do what they say they're gonna do.
Yep.
I mean, you're liking it to get, I'm concerned about some of their prices and what they're doing compared to whether they're front or under. And being more, more than ten percent difference between second or between third and fourth bid, first and second, I have a little bit of concern.
Yeah, everybody can get a vote with the extra price comes out.
You just kind of have to hold them to it.
So I think you gave us good recommendations for a motion and I, I didn't write them down, but somebody let you.
I didn't either, but I.
Or you want to give them to us more?
No, we, we, you, you need to award the bid pending approval by um, IFA. Cause we have to amend that loan. Red Rock's going to be responsible for another hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars.
So it would be pending approval by both IFA and Red Rock to amend the, the wees need to do an amendment to the agreement you guys previously executed with them, because the cost amount's going to go up. You know, the amortization of it will go up slightly because of the.
And would that include additional information or a written agreement regarding steam use?
You could actually make a compound motion where you approve the first part of the bid subject to those two and then you can either table the other part or approve the other portion subject to an acceptable agreement negotiated between town and Red Rock approved by the council.
What he said. I'll make that note.
A second. Can you just work out the wording of the onswing?
Yes, yes.
All right, motion made in seconded. Votes in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let's move down to the last one. We can get in with Mark. Resolution nine nine three.
So this is actually in relation to the um, water treatment project, not wastewater, the main big one. And what it does is um, USDA needed um, Michelle to have approval from the town to sign application documents. The loan itself still comes to the council. But you know, things, cert certifications and things just to apply for it, she needs authority to be able to sign and raise the cap. And you guys obviously aren't already authorized applying for the loan. It will still come back in front of you for approval of the loan once it's offered. The loan and some combination, or, or, and or grant. That's why it's an alternative. So we covered kind of all our bases, because like I said, if they make a grant, we don't want to have to keep coming back to council for, okay, is this one, this one? That's what we're asking for, like, and for you just for application documents. So that's the purpose of this resolution. And it's typically how it's done in these kind of projects. They sent us two examples, one from Primeville and I want to say somewhere else, similar idea. So that's all this is doing.
So we've been talking about this for.
Long time.
Long, two years, yeah, two years, I mean, before you guys came on.
Yeah.
Well, we actually, it was at least three years. And a lot of that discussion we had originally talked about, you know, to, to qualify for these loans, you're going to have to come to a market rate, um, which would then increase the cost for the minimum service charge for all water bills by a number. And that number kind of, it seems like it's changed over time, um, and it may be because of the, um, more information that we get on this and, um, but it, but it's near twenty dollars, give or take, right? I mean, that's.
Between ten and twenty.
Ten, twenty. I, I originally heard ten and now I'm, I'm hearing more recently at least closer to twenty. So by authorizing this, what, what are we actually fully obligating ourselves?
You are authorizing this, you are obligating ourselves to just do the application. You have not approved the loan itself, you're applying for it and you're going to see what they offer. Percentage rate, what part of it's a grant, what part of it is a, and that will include what your water rate's going to have to become to service it. And so you're, it's all going to come back for you, but until you ask the question, you're not going to know what that actually is.
So I thought we applied for this non-years ago.
We have, we have, we have.
Okay.
And there's additional application documents are coming up and there's been so many of different ones that it's, and because they have also, thanks to COVID, normally what they did was they set up a big paper package and did it all at once.
Yeah.
It's coming in phases now. And it used to be the mayor was able to sit down, sign everything all at once, you got your packet in. Well, they're down staff, they're doing everything to be a web portal, so they don't have to talk to you or meet with you. So it's been piecemeal and it was getting to the point where we were going to have to keep bringing stuff back over and over again to each little application form, or you give Michelle the authority to sign it as they come in and whatever additional requirements. Then we bring the whole loan package to you guys if, when they approve it, when, what that is, and then the council makes the decision whether or not to go forward with it or not. Just because you apply, it doesn't mean you have to.
Yeah, I understand. I'm very familiar with the mortgage process, the loan process. I just thought we were well past that already.
Well, it's been, it's been setting. I, I did update, you weren't at the last meeting. I'm sorry, okay.
I understand that this is.
USDA has basically.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Not been doing anything.
Yeah.
So I think what, what will be very important to me uh, is that when that time comes that we're ready to present the whole thing and say, hey, are we going to really enter into this agreement? That we, we get the public's buy-in on this project completely. I know we, we heard tons about, I haven't heard ever, especially those who are familiar with uh, Lakeview and, and how the waterfall has been forever. And so when it comes down to it, a lot of those conversations we had, you know, two, three years ago, talked about this not, won't necessarily solve all the problems, uh, because your lines from um, from the meter essentially to your home, to your home are outdated, they're old, they're, um, you know. To your home are outdated, they're old, they're, um, you know, corroded, and they're getting bad, and so that may be where the problem lies. And I think we all feel that, uh, from both works now, when we say we, yeah, we might obviously be coming down our tanks. When we've replaced lines, where, and then when they got dark water, it's like, well, where is that coming from? Majority of it's coming likely from standing water in those pipes when it starts
I, I will bring one thing to council's attention, just as to remember, this project isn't just about the the treating of the manganese and stuff that causes you discoloration, it's a secondary issue. The other issue is you have a well right now from that substance, suburban water district, that has a lot of water capacity, but without the treatment plant can't be used, cause the arsenic that's in it is too high. So, as you guys have seen with lower water areas, and the amount of spring water that's coming through and everything else, that is your other issue. And I think Jeff can talk to that, I mean, if, if spring water thing ever gets really bad or something like that, we don't, we can't, without the, without a treatment plant, we
That, that well actually gets its own treatment plant onsite.
Exactly.
It has nothing to do with the one.
We're looking at doing?
No, it's, it's, it's personal.
Oh, okay, so it's two, but it may
But that, but that's how we, but that's, that load, that one over there is how we qualified to get USDA funding
Yeah.
at a low interest rate in the first place, cause without the necessity element, they don't do stuff just for cosmetic, or if they do, it's a much higher interest rate.
Yeah.
That also got us some free funding.
Well, and I would like to, and I know that we've addressed this issue as, and I, maybe we can do it or not. Go for the whole big shebang where we go for the electric meters as well at the same time, I mean, why not? We're tearing things up, yeah, the, the electric little ones, smart meters, because if we can apply and tie it all into an issue as being water quality and things like that, then, uh, and, you know, these meters are outdated and
I, I really do feel like this plan is gonna address eighty-five to ninety percent of our water quality issues. You know, there might be some isolated stuff on, onsite at people's homes, but I think the iron and manganese that kind of comes out of our wells is the host of all of our problems.
I, I agree, because I have newer lines, and I know I do, and I can play from having outside older lines, my water quality is
It just goes in cycles, you know, what's pumped, what we're pumping into the tank comes to your house.
Yeah, I have hard water, because that's all of our water, but I don't have the issues I had in other residents. And that I see, aside from the handful of days, the entire town has some major issues.
I, I have less too, because everything in my house is new, all my plumbing is, and my line from my new year to my house is new.
Well, we're doing an, what I consider an unreasonable amount of flushing and stuff, you know, we waste a ton of water.
We're always doing a lot of
Yeah, or, and we're gonna shit your own life on the
So, this is only for the application, obviously Michelle knows that the council wants to address this with the committee immensely.
Well, a, and again, it's not a, USDA wouldn't accept Michelle signing the loan agreement without your, or the mayor signing it without the council's approval anyway, it wouldn't be a legal loan at that point. So, that is a council decision, clearly, so
Okay. So, any other? I've made a motion to approve resolution number nine-nine-three, a resolution authorizing city manager to sign necessary documents through the USDA World Development Program for the town's Lakeview Water Treatment Facility, and that's the town of Lakeview.
No, it's like
Twenty-nine and seven, vote in favor?
Aye.
All right. That'll, now, Mark, you're up. Finally. I followed up, they're wrong.
All right. Yeah.
I thought, I know, I was like, you want someone to be?
You breaking stuff a little bit?
Uh, technology, maybe, uh
Hundred years.
This is still recording?
Yeah. Someone felt the box maybe they got. So, it's my fault.
Really? That's so sweet.
No, it's directly, it's directly behind
I'm taking care of that, by the way.
Yeah, I mean, I've called
You didn't call soon?
No, yeah, I got a call today about it.
I know, the sheriff's department, it was called in, it was my phone.
No, it, the one I got today?
No, it's called in the dispatches.
Oh, yeah, but the one I got today wasn't at your house? They know exactly who it was.
So, I can share it at my house, we walk in my backyard and figure out who that is. Oh, it's all
Yeah, I'm not sure
Okay, well, it doesn't show that way here, so that's fine, okay. So, um, I think everybody here knows who I am, so I didn't know who the audience would be, I understand the way, so I'm gonna skip through some of the stuff, just kind of introduced myself. And that I've covered before. Just a point that, uh, when we had talked earlier about the organizational development process, that it involved a series of steps, and the data collection included the employee surveys and documentation review, which you've gotten some detailed information in the report that I provided. And, uh, so I'm gonna skip through everything that I've gone through before, just a point though, we did look at all the following issues, we looked at finances, we looked at dispatch nine-one-one, staffing issues, policies and procedures, fire prevention practices, ocean compliance, training, apparatus vehicles and equipment, facilities, protective clothing, public education, the morale department, how you did on your organ, or ISO Insurance Services Organization recent grading that happened with the last year. We looked at mutual and automatic aid, both in terms of agreements and how it's working out in actual practical application. So, it was very comprehensive, um, as you know, just on the documentation alone, I have the binder out my truck. It was, uh, we looked at, I think, twenty-five different documents that are related to the town, and they consisted of over six hundred pages of content that was actually read and analyzed, to make sure that, uh, everything was working properly or not. The employee surveys, as you probably have seen from the information provided in the report, they were detailed and in-depth, and they were measurable, and, uh, we not only had a baseline questionnaire, which was the, um, for all the volunteer firefighters, but also supplemental ones, the fire chief training officer, um, the nine-one-one director, and the dispatchers, and the telecommunicators. Twenty-one surveys were mailed out, fifteen were returned, that's a return rate of seventy-one percent, um, that may seem as you know, disappointing perhaps, but keep in mind that it is inherently a voluntary, uh, process. People have to wanna return them, uh, especially when they're volunteers, you can't really order people to volunteer. Um, and also, we did uncover morale issues within the fire department, and so when you have morale issues, that's going to impact people's willingness to engage, because they don't trust that it's really gonna make a difference, and that lack of trust means they don't put the effort forward. And then finally, and probably the most important thing is even though we only had seventy-one percent of the turn rate, I'm convinced we got enough valid information to draw valid conclusions, and therefore develop a, a, a tact line to proceed, so you know, it was a little disappointing, I don't think it was disabling to our goals. I already covered that, about that, some of the documents are listed there, but I won't, I'll spare you going through them, but it was comprehensive. You can see on the screen there, there's a, a list of everything from the ordinance one thirteen, developed in the early nineteen hundreds to your contract with the Teamsters right now, to many others, including financial issues, and nine-one-one funding mechanisms, and security background checks and all of that. So, what was the bottom line? The analysis of both the surveys and the documentations uh, resulted in seventy-five specific key findings, and of those, we developed eighty-one recommendations. Now, it's important to keep in mind what I said at my first presentation. Because we can't do everything, at least now, is not a reason to do nothing, okay? And the fire department, in its current condition, and you all have that information, didn't get there overnight. It didn't get there in one year, okay? So, realistically, to fix it, it's gonna take several or more years, for two reasons. Number one, you can only introduce change at a certain rapid propensity of rate, and two, you only have so much money to spend. And so, you kind of do what you can, and then the next fiscal year, you do some more, and the idea is to, is to make incremental progress. And honestly, and I explained this to the mayor and to Michelle earlier today, when I was fire chief in Up Grove for six years, okay? Our average number of single-family dwelling building permits that we issued was over five thousand four hundred a year, okay? So, in the six years I was fire chief, we had thirty thousand single-family dwellings built. Had doubled sized the fire department, had to build four new fire stations, hire all kinds of people, start all kinds of programs, and we had a ton of money because of the growth rate. The lowest revenue increase I had in my budget for the six years was a twelve percent increase. The highest was twenty-four, and six-year average was eighteen percent. So, we were swimming in cash, and we were hiring and building and buying apparatus. But one of the problems we found is, it doesn't matter how much money you have, you can exhaust the organization with too much change too quickly. And that actually became our biggest problem, is, you know, we can't handle anymore. So, because you have only a certain amount of money, and then we talked here today that you have lots of issues. I think if you look at this as a multi-year approach, and let's keep making progress every year, it's a very doable thing, okay? And when Michelle and I met first initially, she said, well, I've only found X number of dollars, and I think she kind of felt, cause I've known her for twenty-five years, like, oh, you're gonna be upset, cause I'm not giving you enough money to get a lot of things done, and I said, no, you know, you've given me what you can afford to give me, and we'll get that done, and we'll do more later. It's kind of like working on your house, you know, pay as you go, you fix the fence this year, and work on the road next year. So, what do we hope to accomplish this fiscal year, and I, during this interim, when you were going through the other issues, I looked back through, I think, given what you have found in the budget right now, we can probably get most of what I'm gonna talk about here tonight, done this year. And if we don't, we'll take care of it after July first. So, we'll start with the fire department, and then we'll go into such after that. Most important thing we have to do in the fire department is we have to address the training shortfalls. And if you read through the report, and I understand you've all pretty much done that, some of those comments in the fire department regarding the training were brutal. Okay, I, I don't know how else to say that. Um, the good news is, training can be fixed fairly easily, uh, but it needs to be fixed. Now, what's the benefit of that? Well, I, I, I put two bullet points, but it's really three, because they're separate things. The first thing is, it reduces risk to the employees and liability for the town, and those are two separate but related things. The risk to the employee is, they actually get physically hurt or get killed, because they don't have the right equipment or the right training, or they don't know how to handle something properly. The liability to the city follows that, okay? And then the second thing is, improves morale. Now, I, I spent forty-eight years in the fire service, and I can tell you, every time we had a working structure fire, even though we felt very badly for the people that experienced the fire, the morale in the department went through the roof after the fire, especially if we did a good job on it, okay? Well, you can't burn people's homes down just to improve morale, right?
No, we burnt abandoned houses and
Right, but not homes that people need to sleep in that night, but you can do training, and if it's good training, it has the same, maybe not quite as much, but pretty much the same effect. Training builds morale. So, within the scope of training improvements, what's the first thing that we're proposing to do, and that is to bring to all the Lakeview firefighters, training in what's called the new science, which is developed by the Underwriters Laboratory and the National Institute of Standards and Technology. And it's tactical application, which is called SLICE-RS, which is an acronym, developed by the International Society of Fire Service Instructors, and what it does is, it takes the science that came out of this uh, a bunch of people with PhDs and computers and thermal coupler readings and hundreds of structures, test structures they've done, to understand better what really happens inside houses and buildings when they burn, and how the flow of heated gases and smoke are affected. And so, what they learned from that really changed in a very significant way the tactics and strategy that the fire service should be using now. It's a C-level change, the biggest change in my forty-eight-year career, okay? Which is interesting, because what they discovered is the way that the firefighters back in Chicago and New York used to fight fire back in the late eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds was more correct than the way they've done it from about nineteen eighty to the present. And so, they're moving back to it, and SLICE-RS is how they do that. It stands for size up the situation or incident, locate the fire, identify and control the flow path, cool from a safe location, extinguish the fire, and then rescue and salvage, are two actions of opportunity that can be performed when necessary or when opportunity presents itself. So, we wanna do that training first, because that's going to save lives of the people that are in the house if they're trapped. It's going to save lives in terms of firefighter potential loss of life, and it's going to improve the overall outcome, it's gonna reduce the fire damage, so we wanna do that first.
And, and how is that done? Is it on computers?
It's basically gonna be a series of, it'll be some PowerPoint slides, and big videos, lots of YouTube videos of actual that come from these, from UL and NIST, and it'll be me talking to them about it, I've taught this in Oregon, um, a number of times, okay? So, this is not, this, if, if you ask me the question, Jeff especially, being your legal counsel, what's the single fastest way to reduce your liability of firefighter death or injury on structured fires? It's this training, and the cost is me coming down here for a day and teaching it.
One day?
Yeah, we can do it in one day.
But you're talking about, I mean, volunteers as well, right?
Yeah, but, you know
Okay, so we probably
What we do is, we say, look, you really need to be in this thing, and, you know, put some thumbs on it as best you can for volunteers, you know? We'll have Don do that for us.
It should be everybody's best plan.
But if we have to do it, you know, we may have to do it a couple of times, that's real.
That's why I, I realistically have
Yeah, I mean, you can't get everybody a hundred percent of the time, but you can get a lot of them. Okay, so that's what we wanna do, and then, what we want to do is move from the SLICE-RS training to some management leadership training, if you read through the comments that were in that, there were a lot of, um frustration in those comments about lack of management and leadership skill in the officer corps. And that's a teachable skill, okay? I taught fire service leadership and management for seventeen years at Community College level in California. I have a lifetime, uh, community college teaching credential. So, it's easy for me to put this material together and bring it down here and train it, but we have to do it, you know, in, in probably back-to-back eight-hour days, probably on a weekend for the officer corps, try to get it in that way. Um, and, you know, I mean, I, I have a four-hundred-hour certified chief officer certificate from California that involved ten, forty-hour classes, each one with certification exam. I also have an A in fire technology, and a bachelor's degree, and a master's degree in public administration. We don't need to teach those, that level of information, we just need to teach some basic information that will help us, you know? A little bit of knowledge can be dangerous, but a little bit of the right knowledge can go a long ways, so we will make sure we give that. What are we talking about? What are we talking about? Well, we are gonna talk some tactics and strategy, because that's gonna be tied in with what they will have learned on the SLICE-R-S. But we're also gonna go into basic leadership and motivational principles. We're gonna go on organizational principles such as chain of command, unity of command, span of control, scatter versus matrix organizations. Again, nothing deep. This is graduate-level work. This is fundamental stuff that'll allow them to understand kind of in a foundational way how better to organize and execute. We're gonna give them a primer on HR issues such as due process, progressive discipline, risk reduction and risk management. How to do performance evaluations properly. And very critically, because this is one that can lead to rapid litigation. It's harassment prevention and correction. Again, nothing too deep, but enough to educate them. And then we're gonna look at fundamentals of organizational communications, including memorandums, standard operating guidelines. And we're going to take them through not the entire seventy-nine or eighty pages of the employee handbook, but some of the more critical portions of it that are the kind that will lead to liability and costs if they're not followed correctly, okay? And then goals and objectives and staff meetings, how those can be used properly. So once we get that done, those are the first two things. And that'll be largely me coming down and doing training. We want to use a portion of what we have available in this year's budget to access on an ongoing basis a digital online training system, the one that I'm familiar with that we used in North Bend. It's called Target Solutions. If you look at your ISO rating, and if you read the entire series of reports that I provided you, you'll notice that when we did the documentation review, and we got into the ISO, and we talked quite a bit about the shortcomings of training. Do you remember that? And it was very frustrating for me to see that you missed a three, an ISO rating of three by, what was it? One point eight-nine points out of a hundred? And you could've gotten that if you had enough firefighter training hours, which you did not have. Well, they only train once a month. That's all. That's, they have one drill night a month. And if you miss that, it's now two months, and it goes on and on. The other problem that you saw in the comments is, people who you get on as a young firefighter, a recruit, or maybe they're old, like me, but they're new to the situation, and they wait, and they wait, and they wait, and it's like there's nothing moving them towards their entry-level certification in the state of Oregon. In order to legally go into an interior of a structured fire, you have to be initially what they call entry-level certified, which is really a subset of firefighter-one certification. Entry-level is about three-quarters of the firefighter-one certification. And when you get that, you can go in the interior of a structured fire as long as you have a firefighter-one certified person with you, okay? And you never go in without another person anyway. In fact, it's against the law, federal law and state law, to enter a burning structure as an attack crew unless you have two people going in with two people outside. Unless, unless it's a known confirmed rescue situation, then you can break the rule. Otherwise, it's a very serious federal offense. So, how do we get these people to, they're firefighter-one, into their entry-level? A lot of it is very, for an experienced firefighter, very boring, very rogue, very, you know, going through how you spread salvage covers and...
I didn't find it boring.
That's because you're so good about everything.
But no, seriously, if you really look at the firefighter...
Yeah, but I'm not referring to the recruit. I'm referring to the experienced firefighter who's been a volunteer firefighter for fifteen years, having to walk somebody through the difference between a two-man balloon toss and a this, that, and that with a salvage cover. So, the point is, though, with this Target Solutions, they can do this at home digitally. Everybody in the department will have their own account, and they'll be able to log in. They can sit in their, what we call in the fire service, block and load, which is a refiner chair. And they can go to Target Solutions, log in under their file, and their whole plan is laid out there. And the training committee, which we propose to strengthen and revitalize, will have a person on that committee that will be the advocate for and overseer of all of the newer firefighters that need to move towards entry-level on firefighter-one. And they will go in and help this person get set up on their program. This program works automatically, where it knows everything that they have to do to get checked up on things. And it even gives them little tests as they move along. You can't move along unless you pass the test. Once you pass the test, it records it in there and sends the information to the training officers and creates the documentation trail for it. Now, you still have to go and throw salvage covers. You still have to actually raise a few ladders. You still have to pull hose and operate a nozzle. But if you can get, you know, eighty percent of the classroom, or what we call didactic training done, ahead of time by these people sitting at home, two things happen. They get ready so that now, when it's actually drill night, okay? You can separate the more experienced people and say, "You're gonna go out and practice pump operations," which is something interesting to them because that's more advanced. But assign one person, it'll probably be the training committee person over the firefighter-one and entry-level, will say, "Okay, now we're gonna actually go out and throw the ladders and spread the salvage covers and all that." But remember what you got hit for in the ISO report: lack of adequate training hours. And yet, every time one of these people sit down and start logging in and spend an hour here and an hour there, it logs it in there. And so, all of a sudden, your department's gonna go from having, say, three hundred training hours or five hundred training hours for all twenty-one people for an entire year to having five thousand training hours, or something like that. And so, that alone might have pushed you over the limit, or to that threshold, and you might have gotten a better ISO. The other thing, which we'll talk about in a minute, which you've noticed if you read that carefully, is, you also got hit pretty hard on ISO for lack of what they call structured fire training. And they require sixteen hours of structured fire training a year per firefighter. And that's exactly what we did in North Bend when I became chief. There, I had the benefit, because I have my retirement from California pays my health insurance. So when I did my contract with the City of North Bend, I told them I want, as a condition of my contract, I wanted to take the line item for my health insurance and put it in the training budget and use it to send these folks to a fourteen-oh-three NFPA, State Department of Public Safety certified training facility and get two eight-hour days a year of structured fire training. And we met that, we met that requirement. And that's what we're proposing, which I'll get into a little bit more detail. So, this digital system is very important, and it's not that expensive. Couple of thousand bucks per year for all your firefighters. Not each, cumulatively for the whole thing, okay? Okay, and then we want to do this live fire training. NFPA fourteen-oh-three is in, you know, the National Fire Protection Association is the, it is the regulatory god for the entire fire service in the entire country. And almost every OSHA regulation is tied back to an associated NFPA standard. And the standard for safe live structured fire training is fourteen-oh-three. We have a couple of fourteen-oh-three certified facilities in the state of Oregon. The one I am very comfortable with and that we've used is in Eugene Springfield. And then I have a member of my staff, actually two members of my associate consultants, who are NFPA and State Department of Safety and Standards and Testing. They're certified fourteen-oh-three instructors, which you don't want to do this without these certified instructors. And why is this so critical? Well, fighting modern structured fires is more dangerous than it used to, believe it or not. Now, the modern construction that we have nowadays, with modern electrical systems and all of that, the number of deaths in structured fires of civilians has gone down. And the total number of structured fires has gone down by fifty-three percent in the last thirty years. That's because the systems are better that are in the house until they burn. But when they do have a structured fire, they're much more severe. And because of that, while the number of fires have gone down by fifty-three percent, the rate of firefighter deaths, in other words, how many firefighter traumatic structured fire deaths for a hundred thousand fires, has gone up by sixty-seven percent. So let's look and see why. Well, modern interior furniture fixtures and equipment produce four times as much heat per pound of fuel. In a legacy home, which is a home that was built and furnished fifty or more years ago, on average, each pound of fuel, interior fuel, produced two megawatts per hour of heat energy. Today, eight. So it's four times more fuel load, what we call fuel load.
I'm totally glad I have an old house.
Well, but if you have a new couch, a new phone, a new TV, a new whatever, it's all...
I understand.
It's all a page. Now, this furniture is good. This carpet is probably not, in terms of fuel load. Okay, second reason is, modern homes are built of lightweight engineered construction. When I got in the fire service in nineteen seventy-one, the rule was, you could be on roof for twenty minutes without a threat of collapse. Because homes were built out of two, you know, the rafters were built out of two-by-tens or two-by-twelves, and they used real nails, which had a large shaft that was in the wood with a lot of friction to hold it in place, and a little tiny head of the nail as a solar collector. Well, they've changed all that. Now, now they use two-by-fours. And when they join them together, they put what's called a gusset plate, which is a metal stamped plate, has these little prongs that go into the wood like that. And they have a large face plate that is exposed to the fire. So you have a large solar collector picking up all that heat, going into these little tiny prongs that sweat out of place very rapidly. So the twenty-minute rule is now a two-and-a-half to three-minute rule. Most construction built since about nineteen eighty-one or eighty-two has engineered lightweight. And therefore, we assume that the building is collapsible when we arrive on scene. So it's more dangerous. Next thing is, if you watch HGTV, my wife liked the Food Channel. I liked Fox News. She hated it. So we compromised and met at HGTV in the middle, which was kind of interesting for both of us. Well, if you do that, you notice that now everything's about big open spaces, right? Whereas we used to have more compartmentalization. So when you have a fire, the fire spreads much more rapidly. So what do you have? You have a lot more fuel load. The house is gonna collapse much faster, and it spreads much faster. So that's a more dangerous situation. But what compounds it is down here, what's happened to the number of structured fires? They've gone down. When they occur, they're much more serious. But the number have gone down. So what does that mean? In the first ten years of my career, I was on two hundred working structured fires. In the last ten years of my career, I was probably on twenty, okay? Because the number of fires are down so low, because the technology is better, which leads to causing them. So what do we do? We're getting firefighters killed because the officers don't know what they're doing. They haven't had the experience. How do we compensate for that training at these fourteen-oh-three? And that's what we're proposing to do. Okay, first day, forcible entry, rooftop ventilation, interior structured fire search and rescue, and flammable gas live fire exercises. That's all we'll do the first day, eight hours. And they'll actually do the real deal. I mean, they will take power saws with metal cutting saws, and they'll cut bars off windows. They'll cut deadbolt locks out. They'll take Halligan tools and flat-headed axes, and they'll learn how to pry doors open. And they'll actually get on top of roofs and cut holes in roofs. They have an entire structure that's built, a four-bedroom, two-bath, two-thousand-square-foot, two-story house they built just for search and rescue. This is at the Eugene Springfield facility. It's a twenty-million-dollar facility. And then they also have natural gas simulators. So like if a car hits a meter, breaks the meter, and catches on fire, they'll run that. The second day will be actually hands-on. If we are able to schedule ourselves into Eugene Springfield, which is my first desire, if not, we'll go to the state's training facility, which is in Salem. But they have a two, or a three-story concrete burn building, and they stock it full of furniture and pallets and things like that. And then we just do structured fire. We do simu, not simulation. We do actual fires in there and do multiple attacks. So every firefighter in your department, when they come out of that, will end up having half a dozen or more entry-level structured fire experiences. And my proposal is that you continue doing this every year, and you keep a line item there. My firefighters in North Bend have all been to that facility. In the six years I was there, six times.
So whether we have our firefighter-one or not, we can still participate?
Well, no. You have to have your entry level to be able to go interior. You can still go, and you can learn a lot. And you can practice the skills that I showed on day one, and you can actually man, or staff, more accurate, because we have female firefighters now. You can staff lines on the outside. If you go interior, you have to have your entry level. But if we get, it's gonna take time to schedule this. And if we can get that, that digital system online, we'd move a lot of people to entry level fairly quickly.
Are we sure they're operational?
Or...
They're operational or given COVID, they're not shut down?
Yeah, there's a lot of issues like that. We still have to, I still have to deal with. I have not reached out and done any scheduling yet, because I don't have, like, until I have another contract signed, I actually have nothing to negotiate with them. But it's going to be some scheduling issues, because the two trainers that are my associate consultants still are working firefighters, and I've gotta find days that they're off duty and can come and do this work. When the training tower has scheduling space available, plus I have to coordinate with the firefighters here, so... Could be a little, yeah, it's gonna be probably towards spring before we get that done. They'll get the classroom training. They'll get a lot of this new science and all of that, but the actual live fire... Okay. After that, there are some other SOGs. One of the good newses, or good news, get my journalism part of my brain working again. And you saw this in the report, is, you're actually in pretty good shape with your standard operating guidelines. They are better than ninety percent of the fire departments I have encountered. But they were not perfect, and there's something that they're missing, like on your hazardous material response and confined space response. And they also, some that already exist, need to have some more specificity. But that's the kind of thing I can work on at my house for you guys, and then just send them digitally down to us. And you get a cheaper rate when I work from my home office than you do if I come down here. So it's a little bit more efficient for you. That's the Michelle Carey Mark meter discount I talked about before. Okay, and finally, we want to look at fire act and safer grants. And we want to look at trying to get a seismic grant from the State Department of Emergency Management. They have grants that will allow you to have the building surveyed, and they also have grants to actually do some of the repair work. The building was built far enough or long enough ago where it probably doesn't meet current standards. And we were talking about that earlier, the mayor and Michelle. I spent my whole career in the states of Idaho and Utah and Oregon and California, all of which are Grand Central Station for earthquake risk, right? Because of the cascades and Rocky Mountains and everything. So we do want to look at that, but I would recommend at this point, we try to go for grants. I did some seismic improvements for the fire station, the main fire station when I was fire chief in Logan. This was ten years ago, probably. It cost about twelve thousand dollars just to have an engineer evaluate the building and give us an estimate. And then I asked him, "You have to task it correctly," right? That's what we talked about earlier, about correct tasking. I said, "What would it take to bring this building up to current seismic standards?" And it came back, you know, two million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's like, what? We can build a whole fire station for that. So I said, "Okay, I tasked it wrong." What would it take... What would it take to keep the building from collapsing on the apparatus and the firefighters? Even if we had to just cut the doors off, the hinges and roll the fire trucks out and we put up a tent, let FEMA rebuild the fire station later and that came back 120,000. So we ended up wrapping some columns with things like the graphite, you know, and they put the, what do you call it? The cement stuff that goes in there. And it's not cement, I'm pulling a blank on it now, but it's, they wrap it with fiberglass and they put a...
Cluster?
No, it's mix two things together and it gels.
Epoxy?
Epoxy, yeah. Graphite epoxy wrap is what it is. Thank you. It's happening more and more and I've kind of, what's that? What's that stuff?
Old English.
No, there's some stuff you can buy now. What's the name of the product you can buy? I need to take more of that. Okay. So anyway, so we want to look at that. Now let's turn to the dispatch center because we need to do some things there too while we, while we proceed. First of all, we have an unusual situation, which is we have the same employee doing two jobs, answering to two different bosses. And that's a huge violation of the principle of management. It violates the concept of unity of command. And the unity of command is one that says employees should only report to one person at each stage within the unified chain of command. And that needs correction. Right now, it's working okay, I suppose, because your two people that are the directors, the fire chief and the 911 directors, worked together for years. And so they generally get along pretty well and they've made it work, but it's a bad arrangement and it does affect morale. Left hand sometimes doesn't know what the right hand's doing. Employees are getting different direction for different things and that surfaced during our interviews with the dispatchers slash engineers. So that needs to be looked at, but that's not something we would discuss here in a public meeting. We would talk about it because it's a personnel matter. You used to have seven engineer 911 dispatcher. And I'm not sure who got rid of it, but somebody did. And it was a mistake because people have to have days off. And overtime is an interesting thing in the fire service. A little bit goes a long way. If you have no overtime, it's a morale buster. If you have too much overtime, it's a morale buster because it burns them out. And I personally interviewed most of the engineer dispatchers and I can tell you, most of them told me they're just, they just, there's too much overtime. They're getting burned out. And, you know, it's like, if you run 12 people on a shift, which is what I did, I, my minimum staff when I was Fire Chief in Logan was 12 people on duty because we had three stations and we put four on each station. But we never staffed just 12. We staffed 14 personnel per shift because you've got to cover sick leave and vacation. And then what that doesn't cover, you cover with overtime. So what you end up with is you end up with a good sense of morale because they get some overtime, you're going to burn out the workforce. So you need to figure out a way to do the seventh person again. Now, that's not that hard because the associate consultant I brought in Chuck Burdann, who's an expert on dispatch, believes about 80% of the cost of your overtime right now can be eliminated with this seventh position. So that, it's not a $75,000 commitment and maybe a 20,000 or a 15, but it's not 75. Okay. And I've already gone through those points. Right now, because the current 911 director is a part-time employee and he has a life to live and a cabin that doesn't have cell service and on and on and on it goes, he's very knowledgeable in the technology, but he is at times completely unavailable. And that's not an acceptable situation for a critical 911 facility. If the, if the server needs to be rebooted, somebody has to know how to do that. You see what I'm saying? And so our suggestion is that we train at least one dispatcher out of the two on each ship with some basic technology skills. Because right now, they, for the, for the most part, with the exception of possibly one, most of them don't have a clue what's going on in the background. That's not to say that anything bad about them. It's just they're dispatchers and they're fire engineers. They're not technology people. But they need to have some level of training in that. So that's one of the recommendations. And I already talked about that. Now comes the big ticket part of it, which is your technology. According to my expert that I brought in, and some of you may not have heard my comments before, the person I brought in is Chuck Burdann. He and I, I started as a firefighter with SAC Metro Fire in 71. He started in 73. And about the time I became a lieutenant in 78, he started, he went over to the dispatch side of the house and he sits on the NPA committees that regulate all of the 911 telecommunications regulations for the whole country. He is the number one expert in the United States on dispatch systems. And he took a look at the center's equipment and it's all ready to break. And you can't find parts for it anymore and you can't find vendors that are even going to work on, okay? And so what are we talking about? Everything. The CAD servers and network, the microwave link, the AV tech consoles, the printers, the headsets, the furniture, the carpeting. It's all 16 to 20 years of age and needs to be replaced. And it's not cheap. We're looking at a recapitalization in the neighborhood of about 264,000 in current dollars. Now, that's the bad news. The good news is public financing money is really cheap right now and you can finance these things for seven to 10 years. And there's a public policy reason to do that, okay? And if you needed more apparatus right now, I'd be giving you the same speech on apparatus, but your apparatus is actually in pretty good shape. So this applies to dispatch center. But if I move into your community and I live here for five years and during that five years, you have to write a check for that and you have to hit me with a fire impact fee or a dispatch impact fee, okay? Then all of a sudden, I pay for that whole center and I'm here for just a couple of years that that fee is applicable. And somebody who moves and buys my house when I move out comes in and they get it free and clear versus if you capitalize it through a funding, a financing mechanism over a longer period, then anybody that's living in that community during the life cycle of that equipment is paying their fair share of it. So what are you looking at? And I'm just pulling these right out of the air off the top of my head, but I've done a lot of this, so I'm probably pretty close. It depends on what the term is, you know, the length. If you go six years, seven years, it could be a little bit more. If you can get them to go 10, then that's a thing you negotiate with whoever your lender is. But obviously, at 264,000 at 2% or 3% interest, you're probably looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of between 30,000 and 40,000 a year. Now, what that would, the idea behind that is, is you debt finance the recapitalization and get it recapitalized at one time. There's also another critical technical reason to do that because all of these systems have to talk to each other and interact. And it's very difficult to buy new stuff and tie it into old stuff that doesn't even speak the same language. It's kind of like analog versus digital. But the problem with that is all of it comes due at the same time, 10 years down the line or 15 years down the line. So what you need to do is you, you get it set up and you capitalize it once you have a revenue source. You've got that Red Rock plant, which I'll talk about in a minute, coming online, that's going to produce a revenue stream for you. It may not be for a year or two before you actually realize that money, but you need your portion, a part of that, or find it somewhere else that will allow something like that amount, 30,000 or 40,000, to go into the debt financing to recapitalize as soon as possible because this thing could die tomorrow and you'd really be in trouble. We'll just keep our fingers crossed and hope we can keep it operating with duct tape, chewing gum and a prayer, okay? For the next couple of years, but you have to get it recapitalized. You have no choice. If you don't, you lose your dispatch center. If you do that, you lose more money than it costs you here. You'll lose more money in one year than this thing will cost you for the whole life of the equipment because you no longer have dispatch. So you'll need to do this. And the best way to do it, I believe, is unless you find a whole bunch of cash somewhere, is to debt finance it, but you put that as a line item in your budget and pretend like it's never going away, okay? In other words, you just write that amount off. And what happens is it goes ahead and it pays off the debt. And this equipment will probably be good for 12 to 15 years. You pay it off in say eight years, 10 years maybe, you keep that line item in there and what happens is you build up a nest deck. So next time you have to recapitalize, you have a larger down payment and the debt financing is much smaller. And it just keeps going on and on. That's what we've done, not only with this type of equipment, but also with fire apparatus and things like that. So that's something that needs to be done. It doesn't have to be done today. It may, it would be desirable to do it, but realistically, you've got to have a revenue source to provide that money and then you have to actually go ahead and do it. But this is a major, major binding for us. We also found that there's no operational consistency for the dispatchers between different agencies, even within the same discipline. All those different fire departments out there want their thing dispatched this way, that way, the other way and so on and so forth. And that is a very dysfunctional way to have a joint unified dispatch center. It's not fair. It's not even practical for the dispatchers to be able to handle that. So one of the things that we're recommending is when we have the money, because I want to bring Chuck Burdann in for, is to sit down with all the fire chiefs, the ambulance people, even law enforcement and try to get some of these disparate and dissimilar procedures into a more common template that makes the workload for the dispatchers easier. It's not a big ticket item except for the cost for somebody to lead the effort, but it is, doesn't mean it'll be easy because a lot of eagles will be involved and people will think that their need is more important than everybody else. But in order for the collective good for everybody, everybody has to give a little bit, being willing to come up with a standard approach. And so the goal will be to have a common set of procedures between fire and EMS agencies and then try to have those fold as nicely as we can into law enforcement. The other problem that we're finding is that we're having a lot of problems with radio traffic stepping on each other because they all operate on a very limited number of radio frequencies. There are departments in outlying areas that don't know that Lakeview or Thomas Creek are on the air and they're coming on and, and cutting them off. And they don't know they're on the air because they can't hear because it's not a simulcast system with the transmitter. So one of these, what we're suggesting is to look at feasibility of getting all of these repeaters you have, you have several more, so that when they push to talk in dispatch, all the repeaters are sending the same message out throughout the entire realm. You know, I came into Lake County on my way down here from Boise today and I was like still 109 miles from here, right? So you have a lot of jurisdictions or some of them that are way, way out there. And so the idea would be that when the dispatcher, when people talk on the radio, they can be 100 miles away and hear that. So they're not clicking their radio and trying to bleed in and conflict with others. But that's a largely technology issue and we don't know the cost of that yet, but that's on our radar. One thing we can do though, and it's not very expensive, is we can get the fire chiefs together and the ambulance folks to talk about radio discipline. When you have a lot of folks on a radio channel, you gotta, you gotta be quick and short and get to it and get off the air. You gotta listen so you're not getting in and interrupting other people. So radio discipline is something that needs to be incorporated into their training schedule. And I've listened as I've sat in your dispatch center to people in outlying areas literally talking about tell Harold to go down to Joe's barn and open the gate on the backside, not the front side, but the backside because the front side was damaged last week when Bessie kicked the fence, but have to go to the backside, you know, they're doing this on the radio. And that's something that they cannot be doing. They have to work it out somehow. That, that really is radio discipline. So that's what that's all about. Questions and answers. You've had the report. You've read the report. It was, I'm sure for Dennis, and I want to make a comment about Dennis, he was completely cooperative with me. And I believe he wants to do the right thing. He doesn't necessarily have all the skill sets, but he's got the willingness to do that and we can provide the know-how that he may lack. So I'm looking forward to working with him. And I just wanted you to know, he was very cooperative throughout the whole thing. And some of that stuff was hard to, to read. I mean, I called Dennis before I mailed these things to you guys and I said, now listen, fire chief to fire chief, I'm just going to tell you some of the comments in there from, especially as it relates to training, are going to be pretty brutal. Don't take it personally. Take it as a challenge for us to correct. But if we can, if we can do the things we talked about here, by this time next year, it's going to be 100% better in terms of liability and risk and in terms of morale. We won't be there. We won't be done, but we'll be in a much better place. Any questions?
Dennis and I have been talking about some different things over there and stuff and he's, he's right on, on page with everything, so he seems to start working on it. But I told him, I says, right now, what you're looking at, October would not be a good month because they extended fire season.
Yeah.
And you've got several of them that have been going to some of these fires for structural protection and stuff like that, so they're going to miss out on training. But he says, when he does get it, he will get the video and stuff for the...
Digital training?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's really important. The sooner we can get that, the better because then the employees, especially the newer recruits, can be getting a lot of that didactic training done.
And I think, I think we'll pick up more people too.
Well, and I put it in my report, what I've discovered is two things about volunteer firefighters. Now, if you're hiring career firefighters, they don't care if you just send them in a corner. Well, they do care, but you could send them in a corner for days and as long as they're getting that paycheck and the benefits, they're there. But with volunteers, it's a, it's a, it's a task at the heart.
Yeah.
And what they want to feel like when they become a quote volunteer firefighter, they're admitted to the organization is they want to feel like a firefighter soon. And so two things have to happen relatively quickly or the enthusiasm drops off rapidly. And that is issue them turnouts and you still have people, some people that have been here for a whole year haven't got a set of turnouts yet. And the second thing is we have people that have been here, in the report, I referenced an employee's comment where he has been here two to three years and still doesn't have his entry level. And that's just unacceptable because what happens is it's so very hard to recruit firefighters nowadays, volunteer firefighters, for a whole variety of reasons. I went into that a little bit in detail at your last meeting. I could teach a whole lesson on that, it would take an hour, but suffice it to say, volunteerism across all disciplines, not just in the fire services, way down, people are hard to get people to volunteer. So when you get somebody who comes and says, you know, I just moved to this community and I'm going to stay here and I want to invest in it and I want to be a volunteer firefighter and they come in, they apply, you got to catch them in that first several months. If they're still not issued turnouts and training actively in three or four months, you'll notice they'll not come to adjourn anymore. Pretty soon, they're just a name on a, on a roster. So we need to, we need to fix that.
Volunteer lots, you'll need it.
Yeah, I mean, it's human nature. Thanks for the business.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks for the... Anybody have anything else? I'll save this.
You think you slept reading it?
No, I didn't sleep reading it.
Try computing all those bad data. I mean, I had a rare neck brace to keep from doing this.
I thought it was my kid's school curriculum when I came in mail, so happy.
There you go.
But it was very thorough and I appreciate it.
All right. If there's nothing else, then we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 6:00.